Public discussion, maybe harmonious. You want to drop down and pick up the fair board?
I would if I should.
Sit here the whole time?
I don't sit at the whole meeting. What's the sign all that thing?
Sorry, I'm trying to find your app on there.
We are.
Okay. The proposal that you guys gave us.
Right.
The other day or a while back or whatever. Yeah, okay. Going across the front, basically going across the north end from side to side. You guys proposed two inches. We feel like everybody's going to be turning there. There's a, if you go out there and look now, you can see in the rock where people turn up that it's a dish, you know, the rock out. We feel like three inches would be, be much, much better and maybe keep us from having to redo something, you know. It would last longer, you know, so in five years or whatever, we wouldn't be redoing it. Lenita, I think your number was 400,000 as a project that needed to stay under before you had it engineered. If the money works out right, the fair board would like to pay for the east side of the exhibit building, kind of from the south end of the exhibit building up to meet where you all do. On the east side of the exhibit building there because we feel like that's, you get a lot of people that park there, they don't have on boots, they're coming in for, you know, various different things, you know, they have, a lot of women have high heels on and whatnot, so that would provide a flat, smooth surface for, you know, the majority of the traffic that would be coming into the building that needs something smooth to walk on. And so if that's agreeable with you all, that's what we would like to, that's all we would like to do, so. We, we would like to, at some other point, the fair board would like to pave the west side and maybe some back behind. We've got some, we've got some dirt work to do, a couple other things that we want to do there before we, before we do that clear back around there. But that, that's kind of, that's what we discussed and what, you know, the fair board would like to see done, so.
Have you, by any chance, been over to Woods County to their fair ground lately?
Not lately, no.
They put a seal out on the front part of it, they used what they call a canatonic oil, and they put a seal on it about like that, and then they're going to put a brush oil on it everywhere. It'd be looks awfully good.
On top of asphalt or where they put it?
On top of, basically what we've got out here, they, they put, they cleaned it all and put this right on top of it. If you got an opportunity, I wish you'd go look at it because it impresses me to what they did. And like if you're putting this canatonic oil on a mile of road, it costs about $2,500 a mile versus about $60,000 if you...
You just use that rock as a base, is that what you use?
They, they had, they had a, a rock base like we've got or a partial blacktop and spot. They cleaned it all and put this on and, of course, you, you've got to do it on, in the summer months or the fall when it's still hot and good. Regardless of what you do out there, it's going to have to be hot weather, whether you're blacktop or oil or whatever you do, but it, it kind of impresses what, what they did over there. I just saw it last weekend. I hadn't been over there for quite a while.
Do you know what type of weight it supports? Particularly, I know we've kind of discussed. You know, the trailers kind of were there and, and again, just the insurance comes up.
Sure, that'd be a factor, but, and I haven't gotten to talk to anybody directly about it besides a phone conversation to find out what they did put on. I didn't have, apparently they studied that because they went to, uh, not coastal, what's their other company?
Argon?
Huh? Argon?
Argon, yeah, Argon Oil Company, which they do a lot of business with in Woods County, and they recommended this, and I do know that, but the weight deal, I, but I'll find out.
I think, you know, regardless of what we do, we are going to need dirt work done, you know, up there at the front of the building and, you know, we've got some big rocks and stuff.
Sure.
That regardless of what we do is going to have to, you know, be taken care of, smoothed out.
Carl and my guys did some work in the back on that drainage, that helped that.
It did, yeah, yeah, it helped.
I think that we can dig some of that dirt work. As long as I got Carl and we know what you guys want to do.
Yeah.
Carl's pretty good.
Yeah. Well, you know, I guess out there, it's pretty obvious the water has to go east, you're not going to make it go, I mean, you can't make water run uphill, so, you know.
You're right.
Not much.
You just, you just got to figure that right.
If there's two inches of drop or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, but...
You got to go with the storm drain and get in, the storm drain there going to cut history, so.
I've got to be an idiot that knows him, I'm sure Thursday, of course, we got basketball. The engineers who did this are over there.
Okay.
And I'm sure he could, you know, figuring the east side and the west side and everything else in three inches and whatever.
Okay. Mainly the east side.
You want to, you want to clear across, right?
Yeah, from, yeah, from the east fence to the west fence, or well, on the east, there's not really fence, but I mean, it's a railroad.
From grass.
Where you drive in, yeah.
And I'll get a, I'll come, I'm going to call Mike Byers today because he got to be in the office, I don't think they're laying blacktop today.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mike's good.
Well, yeah, that's covered. It'd be circle S, right? Twenty-three, what about the one out, who was that out of Pomp City? Evans and Tru, for like a bid, you know, what off bids?
Okay.
Of course.
If they come out and measure it?
Yeah, they're going to have to come out and measure.
Whenever they do, you might tell them the storage container that's right on the east side of the exhibit building, we want to, well, those, we'll put blacktop under, yeah, we'll make those and make a straight line coming along the railroad track. And then, do we want to come right to the south end of the exhibit building, is that what we discussed? I think that's what we talked about.
I would if I should.
I think that's where, yeah, well, no, that's on for the side.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's kind of roughly where we want to go.
They want the weather 40 degrees and rise, and so the hotter the better.
Well, that better, there's a lot of dirt work needs to be done, and we need, and
we need to be starting on that, getting that done.
Yeah.
If you guys can kind of, I don't know.
Well, we need to know, whoever gets the bid needs to come say what kind of dirt work they want done.
I guess that's true.
Because they're not, they're not going to do this work and come back and it's all falling apart like a road bike, North of Carrier, you think, you know?
Okay.
So are we looking at the front of the building, I'm here at east and west?
Yes, front of the building.
It's going to be, we do the whole front.
West, man, through the river.
Okay, first side together, okay.
And the east side of the exhibit building, right?
East corner, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll go clear back around on the east side, and it'll go from the front of the building, um, north, and it stops, I believe it's 10 foot from the fence there because there's some buried wires on.
I can't remember what else is on.
There's powder rock digging and everything, right?
Yeah, all of it, yeah. But not to the edge of the grass, I think, or something.
Yeah, I can't remember, I seem, I don't know why I said 10 foot, it seems like we, I don't know, anyway, it's going to come pretty close up.
Okay.
And we can still leave that rock though within the 10 feet of the fence?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to leave all that.
The big rock you're worried about being covered up ain't going to matter because of asphalt, it won't matter for two years.
See, I tried to get a deal when they did my blacktop up there to do that, and the school was supposed to do the parking lot at the same time, the school backed out. But he bid a two inch overlay for that at 91,000, and that was 17,000 cheaper than he normally bid it because he'd be going by here going down. But the district attorney wouldn't let us do it because we had to go out on bids. They didn't consider that an emergency.
Yeah.
But he would have done it when he finished putting blacktop.
Yeah.
But we couldn't get it pulled off, so. That was 91,000 for a two inch overlay.
This fifth street going west is just a two inch overlay.
That's all I did with North of Burlington, the two inch overlay, that's all they did on Highway 58 with a two inch overlay.
I just, I, and I, I don't know, you guys know more about asphalt than I do, I just know if you go up there and look, there's, you know, everybody comes in and turns in and there's, that's all that is, is turning right there, very few people drive straight through there, you know, it's, it's just turn, turn, turn.
And when you talk about a two inch overlay, the way they do that to do it right, they put an inch on with a different oil, then the top inch they put on with a tack tighter oil on it. They actually do it in two lays, but it's an inch at a time. And, and that was Cummins that did all that, and Cummins is closest to here than anybody's going to bid it.
Well, you got Cummins down there and you got, it's like, circle S of Clinton, and there's, I can't remember who's in Pomp City, but that's...
I can't either, I haven't, I don't think you've gone.
Cummins will tell you, like they told me, you know, the state's their main people, when the state calls, they go, they may have to leave and come back, but you have to...
Yeah.
I think it's a good time because I think the states aren't spending much money in these contractors or anything.
No, they've canceled a lot of projects.
Well, I'll even see Jason tomorrow with Al, not, not seeing me.
Now, if you go to get a bridge, then you might have 20 contractors.
Don't you think that bill all right, they'll do this, they'll do theirs, 20 in there at once, the whole thing. I don't see a problem either, do you?
Where you getting my house?
Well, it's going to be, yeah, where's the money going to come from?
We're going to study that a little bit.
You got to have the money before you can put it out there on bid.
That's right. You got to have it committed.
Well, just from my viewpoint, at the election board, if this is somewhere you see, this money is not there, this is not going to happen. My, we start our state and federal elections, of course, June 26th, I know that's probably pushing early, the way you're talking about the weather.
Well...
But I realize if it's not done by then for our early voting, and I've got the compliance report here, if y'all would like, like a copy of it, that I'm going to need at that point to contact the state election board, and there'll probably need to be something Jane from you as chairman to say why we're out and when it will be completed, especially by June, which is November, which I don't see a time problem there, it's just bumping up against that June.
It'll, it'll be more likely that you're talking about June, July, or August.
That would be my thought, too.
A hundred and three days better, a week or whatever it takes.
So don't be, I mean, just, I don't want to take you off guard that I'm fighting these dates and I'll play Tennessee, because they did all of them last year, and I says, don't worry about it, we've got it, we'll have it done by the next year, even near when we're having all these primaries, so you may just have to have something ready in the back.
The way I looked at your deal out there the other day, coming that larger rock where you're talking about, it needs to come out.
Exactly, it just gets greater where people were going ankles and things, it would, it would go on way.
That's incredible, huh?
It, it, yeah.
It's really bad.
It's a, it's a wrong material by, by far.
I grew up there before with that jail, I about twisted my ankle and then...
Well, I still want to wear my heels just like everybody else, occasionally, so, but anyway.
It needs to be about a five-eighths rock, and it'd be a little bigger than a three-eighths, but a five-eighths rock, it, it, even a three-quarters is getting a little bit too big for that. We might have to put some in there for your election.
Just to get through June, to run.
To get through the deal, even though we got the project scheduled to do it later on, we may have to do some.
As long as I back some back into...
The sooner we do that, the better that base will be.
That's correct.
The quicker we get that base built.
I think we need to get that out of there now and pile it somewhere and put in some better material just to cover the bases, so to speak.
I want these guys to be involved when we start messing with that, I mean, they're the engineer or somebody.
Well, how are the engineers?
Won't have one till we bid it.
So that's what I'm saying, if you're going to put stuff in there, you better make sure that whoever company bids it, what they want and how they want it.
That's it, that's it.
Compact and everything else, yeah.
They got, they're going to want it right.
If it falls apart, they, it's your fault and not theirs.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying in June, if they say we've got to have a provision there instead of that rock out there.
All right, I'm going to do what you need to do.
We're going to have to cover that, in my opinion, we better.
I think that's a quick, I think that's...
We don't want you to get your butt chewed on because it's not right.
Yeah, I'm not taking the chewing, it's the, it's the same old thing of, okay, if we can't have voters there, then you have to move that, you know, we're early voting polling site, you'll have to move your polling site, and so I just, I just don't want to go there.
We don't need that, no.
That's not happening.
That's not happening. We fought too hard to get here, we have.
There won't be a life found.
And I do appreciate everything y'all have done to make all this happen out there, I love you.
It'll have to be out for bids on three weeks, won't it? Or four?
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
And they out there in that big of a project, that's two, four weeks.
Get everything together, it only could be four weeks.
It's an improvement tool. How long is this?
So, yeah, so I'll talk to, I'll see Jason tomorrow, but I'll, hopefully he'll be there Thursday, I'll make sure he's there Thursday, maybe I'll find him because I got to go to Enid anyhow. See if he can figure out some more.
You got kind of the goof around in Enid there, you can go out there.
I got to go sign checks and I got to fill two ballgames.
You want to sing or play the fiddle, I don't care.
On this other, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't, I mean, if it's a better deal or it's a good a deal on that other part, I mean, I'm fine with that, but if worst case scenario, that doesn't come down to that and we got to do something, then we can fix our parking lot, we can pave it like we're talking and go on and on. I mean, that way I don't have to worry about somebody bidding and they don't like what we did, if it comes down to it, we just, we do it, we go ahead with Plan A, I mean, I don't care about checking in that other, but just want to know we can... We can bid in two ways. We can call back on this and have it be done and not worried about... We can bid in two ways, have the county do the work, dirt work, or they do the dirt work. It's going to be cheaper for the county, but we've got to make sure we do what they want. I'm guessing Cummins will bid a little bit, I would think they would as close.
Well, I, I agree with you because they're close with their plan, the mileage, the haul, and everything they take.
Now, down by Lenita's mom's house, because we've done this before, we put off, we put four steel pipes in, went and rented, rented a hand tamper, we run up and back because we'd done it before, because once or twice Judd went off the end chasing the tamper, but we didn't die when the asphalt would die, yeah.
And I guess that, that keeps us under the money that we were talking, the way we had it, I'll be more than sure, so.
Unless I'm way off.
Finish up what we're wanting to do and then, you know, do the other side or...
Now, if you guys, are you guys wanting to put your side in at the same time, to get them there at the same time, so you guys?
We want to do it all together.
Well, we'll need to, we'll need to specify in there a little bit, so we're not, it doesn't look like we're splitting bids or anything.
Splitting bids, yeah.
We need to specify that you guys are doing this, but in order to get them all out there at once and stuff, so.
All right, okay. Yeah, when they show up, we better do it all then.
Yeah.
And that's the north side and the east side, clear back to the...
South side. Or however, and I, to be honest with you, I haven't been back there and looked, you know, to see if that really makes sense, but it makes sense to go 10 foot more or whatever, I mean, you know, whatever kind of lines, you know, if it lines up with something or whatever, I mean, that's just kind of, I haven't really been back there to, to look, but that's basically what we're wanting to do. Won't be much of a... Right, it should be right, right with the...
What's Mike with Cummins' name? What's Mike's last name, I can't remember.
Bear?
Mi, Barry.
B.I.R.E.R.
Beer, yeah, whatever.
You got your phone down, Mike?
Yeah. Yeah, because you can't get in that building unless you call him.
So did you say that the school backed out on something that they're still wanting to do?
They're still, the information I've got, now that the bond issue passed.
Because when I say his name...
They're, they're considering doing this parking lot, now if we, if the school and us did it at the same time and Cummins just bid, you're probably going to get a better bid.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, is maybe we could have to ask the school if they're ready when we're ready.
Somebody needs to check with the school, they've got all their pipes pulled out now, they're out in here all over there. So apparently, I'm assuming they're going to go ahead and project because they said if the bond issue passed, they would do that parking lot there, so.
So the school might be ready before we're ready, if they're already started on it?
Well, probably, but then again, you're looking at weather conditions, if, to get it done hot, you've got to catch that hot weather to make it really do good, you can't...
If this could be thrown in with the school stuff, if we could save some money, I think that would be...
I could save them, that's what I was talking, talking about, you know, if you have to do a school thing here in Cherokee, we, yeah, like I said, they'll just take calls, they, they'll come back pretty quick.
But they'd much rather do that than this, in the locale here, so all their equipment here, that's what costs a lot of money, and my project up here, they had to move the equipment from Harper County into here to do it, and they, they let me have a good deal because they were supposed to go from north of Amerita where they did that to mine, and they, they said, well, we'll give you the same deal on the bid, but we, normally we'd have cost you more money to come from Harper County, move all the equipment back here, which makes sense.
I thought that was just because you was a nice guy.
Huh?
Because that was because you was a nice guy.
Well, that was part of it, but, yeah. Okay, so you can check on that then?
I will check on that.
Will.
I promise you.
And I'll, I'll try to check on some more of that canatonic surface they put on over there and see what...
What exactly it is.
What exactly it is and the weight, weight factor and all that, because they basically got the same situation we got as far as people turning in and...
The one thing while you're checking in on, you might ask, and it's been brought up about asphalt, and I don't know what you do about it, but, you know, tracking black stuff in the building, you know, there's...
This, this deal, lady, he did tell me this canatonic, you can put it on and two hours later you can walk across.
But asphalt, she won't track.
You're saying about that counter? I really am.
And it's cheaper.
I know, I just wanted to, I just wanted to leave what we want and need.
In fact, they use, they use the example of this canatonic, like if you put oil down, like when we're chipping seals out here in Stan, you put the oil down, a rabbit runs across it, a rabbit can run, you put this oil down over there, a rabbit can't make it halfway across, and he's stuck. So it's set up, it's set up good.
He's going to burn up too, he's going to burn up too hot that oil, that's just...
That's the example they use when you talk to them.
We had rabbit races right after.
I can tell you down, down at Harvard years ago, a duck come down and had it, it was, it was stuck there. Yeah. Guess you've got to wait out there to get the duck out.
I always should have had a picture of that.
Took me a while getting my boots cleaned, I guarantee you that.
The quack going to get the duck.
And I got to sit between, not fair.
But I will ask, that's Jason Bradley who did it, he's the engineer over there, and I'll ask him all that and see if he can get full damn information for me. I'm going to talk to Mike Byers today. I'll use his money, write all these out in there. They had, he had a disgruntled employee two years ago threatening to kill him, so you just can't walk in and talk to him, he's got to...
No, you got to have clearance to get in.
You got to call him to get in his office. Oh, that's pretty bad.
They get nervous, you know.
Well, it wasn't me, I just got a rack up, I showed up to the officers, pushed my deal, they won't tell me how to get in. We'll do, I'll have to have them figure out, well, the west building, you want, before you thinking about going, well, clear the south end?
Okay, the west building, we're going past the front of the west building.
Right.
The west property line.
But when you do the north-south part, would you, later on?
Oh, yeah, later on, um...
Clear down bucking shoots or that, I don't know.
I, we don't know for sure yet, it kind of depends on...
Money.
Yeah, that, and, and the drainage deal and horse traffic, you know, I mean...
The drainage is the biggest problem.
Yeah, yeah, so that's kind of, we're kind of taking it one piece at a time.
Okay, but he might have some more stuff on this, I'll, I'll, okay, get what I get, get after it, right?
But maybe he has recommendations for us, too.
Well, he's going to have a lot of recommendations, engineers always do.
He'll have a lot.
But now, when you get into the guys that built the building, you want to get after them real good because they put in a lot of change orders that didn't need to be there. Tom knows and everything else, and there's also some electrical stuff up there with no way to get there.
Oh, and if somebody needs a locked office, that'd be him.
Yeah. We're not going to use him again, are we?
No, sir.
Yeah, Jason's the person doing all this, yeah, and he may come out, talk to y'all if you want him to, I might, I'll ask him if he wants to.
Did Tyler make a copy of that?
No, he said those are his only two.
You have enough, you have another copy?
Nancy can make more copies.
Okay, okay.
You want more copies?
Yeah, if you don't mind watching, I guess.
Here's a, here's a copy, you're playing a copy here, and that one.
Yeah, I brought in two copies.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I brought in there were two that Tyler...
Take as many as you want, because I knew you took them last time.
Yeah, yes, okay, yeah, okay.
I wouldn't ask you to deal off the right hand, please. You don't want to come down like that, that sand's blowing already.
Okay, anything else?
I think you're good, appreciate your time and...
Thank you.
And everything like that.
Thank you.
Sure, appreciate you coming.
See you. See you, guys.
Don't freeze out there.
Yeah, I just appreciate you guys.
Yeah, thanks. They don't want to get out of my company.
Let's go back to the man.
Sorry, Carl, I just wanted to say that.
Just last week, the Cherokee paper's got to Enid Turner's, Chisum Trail Terminal at Dunham, Cherokee Strip Terminal, somebody, I don't think anybody took all my stuff. I know we played 12-20.
You come by after your, I want to get back, I can rush you off a copy?
We can just do it right out here with Cherokee paper and that machine Nancy has.
Man, I can get you a bigger copy than most of the paper.
She can make a bigger or smaller, too.
I can go all the way up to 11 by 17 if you really wanted to, it'd be stretching it a little.
So, uh, is Cameron Kevin sick? He was practicing actually, but he wouldn't sit down, you could tell he didn't feel good.
He wasn't feeling very good after Friday night's game.
Yeah, he wasn't.
I think it's because he kissed Jayden.
Really what?
She was sick.
Or he kissed Jayden?
I told him quit making out, he wouldn't be at six.
Are they back together?
I don't know.
Some, I heard they was apart again.
Oh, it's happened.
I can't keep up.
They were never together.
Well, that's true, too, I've heard that, too.
I did see the kiss, though, party.
Second.
I make it much better.
Second.
He seconded, all right.
Make second to approve, and then it's all figured out.
It was second first, yeah, I'm spitting.
If something's wrong, you just don't want your name to be the first one.
I just didn't want to cut in.
I'm just glad I still got my rear, I think what was going to happen on that, we don't... So Jaguars going to win it all?
I don't know.
He says no.
We shall see on Sunday.
Where, where they at, I don't even...
They're going to play in, they're going to play the Patriots.
They're down four teams? Is that what, right, Patriots, where they playing at?
In...
Foxborough? I think so, too.
Comrades don't win it all and hopefully retire.
Why you want to retire?
So who are the four teams? Jaguars, Patriots, and who else? Vikings and...
Eagles.
Eagles, Vikings and Eagles are playing each other, and then the Dragons and Patriots.
Oh, for the Vikings.
Yeah, they'll be the first Super Bowl team to ever have home field advantage.
That's good as all.
Because Super Bowl will be in Minnesota, right?
You walk in my yard, it's crunches and it's the same.
We shall see, stranger things will happen.
Yeah, this is getting serious.
Yeah, it is. Dry weather.
This is getting to be terrible.
Also to the point where if we had a 10 or 12 inch snow, I'm not even going to be that upset.
I got my trucks parked and my graders parked, if we haul gravel, we tear up, then we fix.
No, I'm with you, loud and clear.
I just want, I just want good rain because I don't want busy, I don't want a busy market.
I'll take two foot of wet.
The drought we're in, let's just call it what it is.
Anything you do, anything we do out there makes it worse.
I'll take two foot of wet stuff if it come down.
I'll take anything.
Me, too.
Darn right.
Breakdown.
Breakdown, yeah.
I feel like there's a bubble over our county, it says, no precipitation allowed.
You just watch those clouds take down.
I got something I can say about tapping.
The clouds come down and they just start.
I've seen it twice now on the radar, it's like snow coming, it's coming, and then psh, it's gone.
Stan, you're gonna start taking water balls every time you go fly and start dumping them out.
We have a shit day, whatever that is.
Go up and see, you go up and see the clouds, but we don't even get any clouds to see.
I thought we were gonna get some the other day. It knew.
Maryland Thorpe, tell me it rains.
Yesterday.
Tell me it rains on the just and just alike, and I said, where the hell's that put us at then? Didn't go rain here.
Yeah, and then six months told me you're having a flood, watch.
It rains at the end of every draft.
Right?
Now that was an optimist, though.
See, Chris, if it told me one time, I lived here long enough to know one thing, it'd be just as damn dry as it's damn wet.
It's true, though.
One extreme falls the other. But we love our Oklahoma, don't we?
That'll hit about, we'll get all that rain in about June when everybody is trying to cut what they have.
Yeah.
And everybody would complain, and then there's too much rain.
Do you believe that was a secret? Brand new from there opposed to Savage Yard.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna.
Spring, it's two hundred dollars in Savage Yard, a hundred dollars there.
That is an absolute.
At least we got a spare copper reel tire now.
National Guard might have to go out and buy some more helicopters. If they don't get any rain, fire season.
Okay, Kyle, did, did OU's strength coach get a lot more money or what?
I don't know, I don't know if they're just ready for a new.
Nineteen years, one spot.
Change or something, change scenery maybe.
Oh, yeah, no issue, fired your defensive coach?
OU's already, OU's already hired their new treatment conditioning coach, they hired him.
Oh, did they?
Being the last weekend, can't remember his name, but.
I could be a strength congestion coach, lift up the boys, get after it, get after it.
Uh, I think it's probably much tougher than that.
Oh, I know it's much tougher than that.
I think the guy would probably work out with him and.
It looks like it the way it looks, yeah.
Everybody said that their preseason stuff, like in the spring and then early summer, their workouts are pretty tough.
Oh, yeah, they are.
But a save of them having a September, October meltdown. That's like the Ohio State game.
I imagine all them college workouts are pretty tough.
Oh, yeah.
Think that's where my wife makes me do that yoga, that's pretty tough.
Stan, you parting out?
She not just laying before and digging now.
You see the tears?
You doing yoga, are you, Stan?
Hey, what you doing during it?
I could lie a little bit.
Are you actually doing the yoga?
No.
Okay.
His yoga's sitting in her closet.
She's gonna make me work these days.
Oh, boy.
She just keeps getting meaner, I'm gonna have to. At least I remember what it is now.
How you, just wanna get up out of bed?
Stretch and get up in the morning.
Over twelve hundred hours? Sorry.
Just one day?
How did, so went pretty, her opening went pretty well?
Oh, yeah, how is your, is that your, you're talking about your daughter's business? How is it going?
It's been really good.
She opened?
She's been open about one day, she was closed yesterday.
So she opened back today, or?
Daughter's about classes, don't she?
Well, she found two girls.
Okay.
They're gonna go in the, telling them one every day, now she's gonna work her, um, internship on Tuesdays and Thursdays from eight to one.
Probably made her feel pretty good.
Was that gonna be?
Sorry, awful with a good day.
She, she was very, very excited.
Of course, she's done with the internship, huh?
Out there in college.
For four?
Marketing.
So what is she selling at, is it, is it clothing, right?
Cool.
Women's clothing?
Women's clothing right now, she wants to go on into children's and men's.
She's gonna find a bigger building.
Yeah, she'll have to go into a bigger building.
She's still looking at maybe open here?
She just fell under those leases, the leases is, she's taken over lease for a girl until, um, the end of May.
Well, if she can do, if she can do good enough, she can, about two stories.
I must be one.
That's cool.
They're better stuck together, it's pretty good.
And then mom will retire and she'll run.
Retiring to run a clothing store.
That would be like retiring to run a dairy, huh?
I think I saw that she wasn't really gonna, is she paying her employees or, or no store credits, wasn't that?
Store credit is what she told me she did.
A clothing store be a lot, but on dairy, because dairy, you gotta go milk it, cows, you cannot walk out of the clothing store and tell them you want to.
Nah, if you want to.
Well, true. Your daughter's got a real nice personality, she can sell stuff.
Uh, Judy Elliott come in and I was holding Caitlin Nicholas' little girl, she, we rocked her to sleep. Aren't you the little Nita's daughter?
I want a mom, I'll see you that now.
Yeah, she says.
What?
Well, she didn't come up here to help you?
Yeah, she.
Nicole says, no, she's holding babies, the point of that being.
Yeah, that's giving that a priority.
That's why, she says, oh, you have grandbabies, I went, no, no, I have no grandbabies, I have to steal babies.
Borrow, borrow, borrow.
Borrow them.
At Christmas this year, my mom was holding my brother's foster baby, and I was like, mom, you want anything? She said, oh, I'm good. Walking the baby to sleep, but, oh, yeah, she's, she's gonna do that and eat the food. Said it was better on her diet.
Better on, yeah.
To eat as much.
I'd be a little behind here, Jay, might be here till noon.
It'll be lunchtime, huh? If you're here past eleven, you gotta buy lunch.
I thought it'd be pretty good. Started already.
Check, see what she put in my breakfast, one.
Know where she put your lunch, is it in the kitchen?
Yeah.
Lunch ticket.
One free sandwich at home.
One free sandwich, uh, and a dollar so you don't get picked up for Vegas.
And you still have to pay her.
You think she's a mighty mean old woman.
Gotta keep you in line, it's kinda thing, that's a stern woman, right?
Yes, now you gotta sleep with your eyes closed.
Did you, uh, probably haven't yet, Nancy had.
Do what?
That guy coming, print the application.
Hasn't, I've seen it.
Ain't, ain't brought back in, so I told him about Stan's, he's got an open. Tony come to you about the washer dryer? I guess Nancy got, figured out you have, you have a washer and dryer, I'm sure they're gonna put Tony's already.
Want to just get the washer dryer?
Oh, they come from.
That deal out there?
That airport, deal at airport.
It's already given out. And I don't have any more, so.
Is that mine? You're all up to that?
I got your signal.
I didn't even look at it. What's the date?
Does this help, yes?
Sixteen.
Yep, maybe when I glance, anyway.
Create my account, I'll tell you.
Hey, did you see, uh, Matt Morris passed away?
Who?
Matt Morris, he dead.
Really?
Passed away yesterday.
What's his name?
Had, it was something to do with congestion part failure.
He didn't sound very good the last couple of times he's called.
That's number three then.
We have a little bit.
It was number one?
Uh, that Raymond's mom passed away yesterday, works for.
Oh, Raymond Donald.
I know. Live scan maintenance agreement. Sergeant Morph, Morph Track, whatever.
I guess mine here a little bit, yeah, all right.
Did you say past right yesterday?
Raymond Donald.
Raymond Donald.
So I'm here in trouble, I'm trouble here, do you, this one's still plugged?
She gonna swim in?
No, it's got plugged somehow. I'll be on that.
Try putting an air, an air hose in there to blow it out?
It just come out the other hand, other side.
Got that stopping in between?
Were you at, um, Rockland State Fuction?
Huh?
Were you at Rockland State Fuction?
No, but I was in there after ballgames the other night. It made it, it made it really nice. Yeah, Ricky's a good waitress, I bet, I don't need any more beer. You have to see Jake was playing.
Yeah.
So, where's the evidence?
Where's that at?
Right on, right, uh, you know where the, Dela used to be on Main Street? You know what the drugstore was?
Yeah.
Across the street down the corner. You, you store's right here, it's right across the road.
In, in Helena?
Uh-huh.
And did you say it was a steak, steak place?
I asked, I didn't even think about the people that owned it, and I asked the archery unit if they'd eaten there yet.
Oh.
I got an earful about why they would never eat there.
Oh, yeah, I, I heard it, that was you, I heard it, I'll never step foot in that likely white place. Red Brick Public House is called.
Means, that means I probably won't be able to talk to my brother and go and eat with me one time there.
You can't, well, there. What, Friday steak night, tomorrow's Thursday night, and chicken something on Saturday, I couldn't understand the thing, couldn't even know where it was. Closed on Mondays. There's still gets Friday, Saturday, Sun, Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Kinda like the Shays is, huh?
Yeah. Something right there, I've been there for a while.
Maybe there's a Christmas party there, I had a prime rib, yeah. I don't know if I, I never had a prime rib, so I don't know if I just don't really care for prime ribs, but.
Uh, but he, but he and I, but he and I have a lot of neighbors that go down there and partake in the barley pop a lot.
Where is this place at?
Which one?
Which one? The one in Helena?
Oh, it's in Helena?
The Red Brick Public House.
Are they pretty, is that a pretty good place to eat?
They're right there. The, they, a lot of talks, they said it's real good food, and Saxton cooking the steaks, I got told. Man, it's pretty cold that night, he was out, I can't say. That's dedication. But you know how that building used to look, it's totally completely different now, it's clean, that ceiling looks good, you know, where that was a little ceiling.
Yeah, Saturday afternoon, Darrell Judy was going to the ballgame, that's where they were headed, for some, for hell in it.
They went to Red Brick Public House too?
That's where they were headed last I knew you.
Oh, I know.
He said, you wanna go, and I said, well, gotta take the bus back home, sorry.
Hello?
Lane can drive the bus, can't.
Good.
Yeah.
Could just let him do it.
Yeah.
Person can do.
Go ahead.
How about, how was, was Blue Jacket pretty decent?
Uh-huh.
Well, scored ten in the first quarter, was twenty-five to two. We had the, the first half with thirty-three to six.
Wait, I just put on speakerphone so I needed to hear it too.
The fact that the voice came was too tight.
But neither said to her knowledge it hasn't matched it or be better, it, it's about price or what?
Yeah, yeah, it, I mean, it, I mean, I don't have any way to match the state bid.
Okay.
They didn't match it before, it was. Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge either, so I don't know.
So, I don't know, Rick was just wondering what your guys' feelings were, you know, from what we did in the past, you know, to what you want to do now, so.
Okay, well, let's, let's discuss and we'll get back with you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any, any guesses where they're gonna go for playoffs?
The way it looks to me is that way.
To east, yeah? I'm sure they'll host their own district.
Hmm, I'm pretty sure.
Boys are gonna ride the shirttail of the girls.
Yeah.
Where are we going then?
I don't know, I bet, I'd like to see you go west.
Why?
It's west traveling.
Yeah.
How, you don't need to play in area over by Tulsa. Be nicer, area would be about even.
That'd be pretty good.
It depends on what these rankings do tomorrow.
Cause they'll be, they should be everything.
Cause Hammond.
Should come out Friday.
And Hammond got beat, Red Oak got beat, Lee got beat this week.
Well, that helps.
And that, that, that kinda messes it. It, you can't tell what those idiots down there, they'll take it though.
Right, there's. The coaches need to submit all of their, their ranking, and then a committee, and like, they need, you know, once a week, they can, can decide on. You can't have, you can't have Northwest teams picking Southeast teams and vice versa. They've never seen them play until maybe, usually within two of the state tournaments.
Absolutely, and they're always against the Northwest team, the other ones that vote anyway, they, they don't want any.
What they're saying, what they're saying is true, happens all the time.
Yep, happens all the time, since Sasquaw and, um.
Lamega plays here tonight, so I'm gonna watch that game and see, I would watch their boys play.
Lamega plays both.
Lamega boys are not near as strong.
That could be a hundred nothing.
Start, cause that good boy, that Turner boy moved to Sealy. And he's, he's a leading scorer at Sealy.
Think Cherokee boys have a chance to play with me?
Yeah.
And they played pretty, I mean, they played well on Friday.
It just depends on.
Yeah, we don't play defense underneath.
Well, when Utah got foul trouble, really hurt Timberlake. Timberlake girls, that's, on Friday night, that's the best I've seen them play all year.
I agree.
They played great.
They can play that good.
I mean, if they play like that, you know, they, they didn't have a chance of making a run at the area.
Yeah, I, 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 I called Marnette Llewellyn. Yeah, Llewellyn, you gotta run the score up like that, I don't like that. Well.
He probably could have pulled his, or at least quit half work trapping them a little earlier than he did.
They needed to learn that and do it, cause they.
Yeah, but when you're up thirty, it looks bad.
He don't care. Did you notice the cut Cherokee coast didn't put it in paper? Score was all in the, in paper.
It'd be in Cherokee paper.
I didn't know, I didn't know.
I, I texted him yesterday and got the box, or got the book, copy of the books.
Cause that was, that was the first time in a, in a while.
Blue Jacket, which I guess.
I make it most approved.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
All right.
Rank it, rank it.
That was the first time in a, in a while that Drew Bryant was hitting.
Well, Drew, that dream.
I mean, they can, they keep playing like that, they could easily, I, I think they'd have a hard time making it to the championship or the, you know, tournament, but they could easily be in the third place game.
Well, yeah, cause you'll have to.
You'd have to play.
Those are the sheriffs on the bottom.
Pretty much set up to have a Lamega bro into the finals again.
Sheriffs on the bottom, Jack.
The sheriffs are on the bottom, don't sign those, we need to sign the top of the other ones, so.
The thing is.
You've got the sheriffs down.
But Timberlake, you gotta, from the win, we gotta play Brighton next game.
My boys, boys have a term, it's gonna be pretty, pretty tough.
You need to know all these nasty, nasty towns around you. Same way here.
Do you know who they are?
No.
Since you got sort of thought.
Jeffers Bonders.
Yeah, so Chase kid scored thirty the other night. Surprise Hall fed him that much.
County General.
Russ, I couldn't, I didn't think that Danke had it in him to hit three threes in the game.
County General.
But that Bryant girl had been hitting, her dad could, I told her, it'll, it'll come, look ahead, talk to see, you know. Him and I talk a lot, a lot at ballgames. Him and I talk a lot, a lot at ballgames.
I'm waiting for, once they get some better playoffs, uh, she hasn't recently. I don't know if she's playing here.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's amazing. Maybe they'd mess with you. You play several years here and then you transfer to the rival school.
Yeah, but don't, don't. Oh, that's what I said too. What's wrong? Vote. Of course, he's a pretty streaky shooter anyhow.
Scoville girls are better on the post than you would give them to be.
Megan. I think that's number two's Megan is, you know, Reagan. They're starting to play better, yeah. Have to start to shoot the ball right.
I think they were both were playing pretty decent. Then he pulled one. I don't know if he'll put her back in the second half.
Pull number one, yeah.
One of them's got a little attitude problem.
Both of them did, but number one's got the worst attitude problem. That's Reagan thing.
Not the first.
I don't know. They're twins. They've got a smart mouth.
Is eighth grade girls gonna go to Timberlake? You're not gaining much, but you're, I mean, everybody's gonna be.
First year one.
Cause there's no seniors.
I make the most of proof.
Second. Most of them remain saturated all the favors.
Aye. No road crossings?
No. Much of officers report.
Just have the treasurer.
Can't believe they didn't get on it. Just calm down. But I just blows, I do realize getting few all the time. Okay.
Well, this was the first year I don't know they've actually had.
Audit.
They just try to work in the stacks.
Right. Kimmy, I don't know. I looked at her. Like she's act like something's bothering her or whatever. I couldn't.
I'll be, I'll be. She's kind of like that here too. I mean, she, she going off on a clear four game and they play bad.
See how good they shoot over eating that call.
If boys don't start playing a little better defense, they may not make it to the state tournament.
Our boys, they won't make the state tournament.
I think they will. If their shooting's on, I mean, if they, if they can shoot the ball, they can.
Your boys won?
Ah, well, when you get down the road down there, them guys can play big defense, you know, man-to-man defense or anything else. It just messes them up.
I think they'll have a chance.
I thought they were sure to make it, Michelle.
Well, I wouldn't mind seeing them state tournament, but.
The thing that's gonna help them is it's not, you're gonna have to have five good defenders because you got five good scorers. I mean, they, you know.
I make the most of proof.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Next one.
Burn ban.
For fourteen.
I've got a copy of a deal and I failed to bring it up here from the forestry service and it says you can put it on up to thirty days.
The one that they told us to.
I know, I know.
That was from.
That was, that was signed, a bill was signed in by the governor that the.
Well, let's just do fourteen days.
But we.
When does it sign down?
Uh, two thousand and twelve, but I can't find there's any amendments to it. It's been.
Cause the one I gave you guys was, was from the forestry.
I got it from the forestry service, yeah.
That one was from the forestry service.
And this is from the forestry service and says that full authority given to the county commissioner for a period of up to thirty days to put a burn ban.
Bring it, bring it tomorrow.
I forgot to bring the thing.
I make the most of the proof in burn ban.
Sounds about right.
Fourteen days.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And hopefully that's a positive outlook. It will get some moisture in the next fourteen days.
But that, you should just put it on for thirty days and then because then it would rain.
Didn't last time.
No.
Well, we're not upon thirty days.
We're not upon thirty days, yeah. Down the road, Lani and I live. We just need to kill all the grass or anything else and have a little Sahara East.
That's that way.
Yeah.
I had someone tell me the other day, as soon as there's a slight, little bit of moisture, he's gonna start burning.
Who? Newland?
There was.
Yeah, he tells me that every day. Oh, it's burning.
Well, yeah, I did. I didn't see it.
Got you five hundred bucks if you do or we're gonna throw you in jail.
Good luck. He was getting jailed.
Hell, he would.
I'd come by and see him. Hey, what are you doing?
Bring a bowl. You'll take a bowl of any sandwiches in.
Make most of proof.
Approval, disapproval of EMS to acquire a accommodate a fuel count.
They, he hasn't gotten far enough in to getting, this is Roger, um, they got wrote up because they have not been doing their fuel bids, calling out for the three quotes. The auditor suggested that they get a comdata fuel card. That's what the sheriff uses, but he hasn't gotten far enough in there to see whether the contract, but they told him that it needs to go through the board to even begin to get one. So that's what it's on there for.
Well, I think it'd be similar like the sheriff's got if they've got a card and they don't have to make that be a, that's what sheriff does.
But they hadn't been doing anything. They'd just been doing to the local co-ops and they told them a long time ago that you guys can't do that. Say this was their first audit that they had where they had split the actual auditors into them having their own audits.
Right.
I'm gonna give my approval to get a card.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transport of juveniles no longer be tampered.
Yeah, we got, a lot of this is we got the whole thing. A lot of bad, I don't say bad, a lot of problems with families and juveniles. Recently, recently the bills got so much.
And they're pretty, pretty good bills there.
Yeah. Which is a really sad situation, but. Or go and transport your kids. Let's see, I'll go and transport your kids.
He's not.
Be a lot cheaper if you just fly them in your plane.
Throw them out.
Yeah, it would be cheaper.
Is parachute cheaper than the bill?
Who needs a parachute?
I was thinking.
Problem solved.
Not the kids' parents.
Wait, are you jumping out or are they jumping out?
Sure ain't gonna be me.
Don't wanna get rid of your pilot.
That's why I never stood skydiving. Jumping out.
Were they good airplane?
A second.
All in favor?
Yeah, Jamie.
It's all good jumping out of a perfectly good airplane. Got a perfectly good parachute.
Request to remove gap tops to the receiving officer and request to appoint T.J. Rock and load the receiving officer with AMRI by responders.
The question approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Is that your property? Access, give me change. We know about that, don't we?
Private properties with protection for the southeast half of the twenty-nine, twenty-six of that and pull trees and on landowner's land. That's yours?
Must be, yeah.
Pulling trees and put on landowner. You don't put trees on Chad, are you?
Yeah, on the landowner. Make sure you follow them deep.
I used to put them like that too. That probably made fun of me.
Hate to tell you, but I do whatever Chad wants done, just.
Don't say it too loud. I make the most of proof.
Yeah.
Second.
We want you to.
All in favor?
Thousand dollar check to the newspaper. What he told me.
Should we do all these sharp flexes and regulations at the same time?
We can, we can.
Hey, Lani, if you want me to, I'll just take my coffee and then I don't want to bother you.
Wonder where that's at?
That property, Chad?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I need to legally look it up pretty quick.
Is that District Two? Is that where that's at?
Mm-hmm. That's in District Two.
Yeah.
Dang it. I'll get worse instead of better. I used to always make it. That's a good exercise.
Is that yoga?
Yeah, this is my yoga right here. I used to make that yoga.
Oh, Vanessa.
Is it Jazer?
Vanessa Tumblewin's Janes just like.
Vanessa Tumblewin's.
Vanessa Tumblewin?
Up here.
And this, yeah, the officer has to sign their.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Don't sign the county clerk one.
Don't sign the county clerk.
I don't think I signed mine either.
How often do you update your battery backups?
What?
How often do you update your?
When they start chirping.
Do we have battery backups?
Oh, did you really? Oh, you don't sell them on there? You have battery backups on there? It gives you, once they start chirping, I mean, they'll still go. It's kind of like, um, like your. Phone detector. Will start giving you a warning.
Yeah, it will drive you.
That's cause it's worse than a chirping.
I'll probably just beat mine with a baseball bat.
We'd certainly do that too.
That's county clerk.
Meaning on the self-no window, give it a little pop.
Yeah.
I had ten of those going then. They would ship them out replacements. Let me just yank them out.
Driving us please.
How about sheriff's office? He's supposed to sign his side?
Rootman's will sign.
Okay.
See, I've got to sign this too for Nesska Tumblewin.
And those resolutions don't have a spot. Just the surpluses.
Rick's deals, that's yours.
God bless you real good.
Huh?
God bless you real good.
I need a lot of blessing from God. I guarantee you that.
More blessing, less lightning strikes. Said more blessing, less lightning strikes.
More blessing, less lightning. You're right.
It's really a wonder when the three of us sit down here, there's surely a lightning rolling on top of it.
A lot of them.
Connect your legs to your chair. You still realize that. Promise we don't ever have any rain and storms.
It'll come someday. Hopefully.
Laura make the motion on that?
I make the most of the proof.
All in.
Follow.
My second.
All in favor? Hundred percent bid.
Nope.
Move we go.
Second. All in favor?